You will come toward her. Oh, call please.
Commissioner Bailey, Commissioner Bunton.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here. George, can get you to pray for us, heathens?
Well, gracious, how many, Father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. We pray, Father, for continued safety for our men and women, service people that are serving overseas and at home. Also, our first responders, Father. We ask a blessing tonight upon our farmers, that they've started their planting season. This drink of water will help them, and we just hope that they have a successful planting and a safe plant. We ask, Father, also, that you be with us tonight through our deliberation, that we do things pleasing to the folks of Grasset County. For it's his name we pray, amen.
Amen. Join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the liberty of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the firm hand of God.
We switched number one and number two on a new business. Any other additions to the agenda?
We need to add, and for consideration, to approve the tentative union negotiation agreement after we come out of closed session.
Your motion to approve the agenda?
I move second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please public comment.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here because the city of St. Louis seems to be misusing cemetery zone land that is directly impacted directly impacts the health and safety of nearby families who live near the cemetery of Bowles Road. This land was deeded to the city in 1915 for cemetery use. It is known to Arwan Residential Cemetery, but the city is now using it for concrete crushing, leaf dumping, equipment storage, and truck staging, without ever going through a public hearing, planning commission review, or formal rezoning. I submitted a FOIA request, and it confirmed there are no permits, no site plans, and no records of approval. They simply started using it this way. I want to make it clear that this site should not be allowed to be grandfathered in, the scale of operations drastically expanded in 2022, and there is no evidence of legal approval or continuous use that would qualify for such an exemption. You can't rather grandfather in your legal activity. Members of my family that developed health issues related to dust and mold exposure and now require onboarding allergy treatments. There are piles of decomposing leaves, concrete dust, and road dust from constant heavy equipment use. According to state guidance, operations like this are supposed to be at least 500 feet away from homes, but several homes appear to fall well within that distance. The site is unsecured with open gates, equipment left out, and semi trucks idling overnight. Children have been seen climbing 100-foot piles of crushed concrete. There is no fencing and no accountability. It's also important to note that the St. Louis City Council also serves as a cemetery ward, meaning the same body charged with protecting the land is now allowing it to be misused. That is a clear conflict of interest and a violation of public trust. There is legal precedence for this, in which the courts affirmed that land held in public trust, especially cemetery land, cannot be repurposed without legal process and community oversight. I'm asking you today to help bring oversight to this issue. Please press the city for answers and support moving these operations to industrial zone sites that the city already owns and is available. This would be a more appropriate location that would protect residents and honor the cemetery land and its intended use. I had brought up these issues a month ago to the city, and the only thing that they did for me was put up a slow children sign on the hill, which I did appreciate, but they didn't address any of the other concerns. I also wanted to mention that we need to hear all sides of the debate on battery storage. We heard from one side last month for true oversight, we need to hear the other side. What can you do to invite someone from the other side and have another community meeting? Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration of the consent calendar. Move. Moved by Tim, supported by Jen.
Yes.
We approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion aye. Got a calendar. Paul.
Well, let's get you to go over here, there.
Get your mug on TV.
Oh, actually, I'm not on that screen, so that works out just fine.
Yeah.
The other one you were.
Got put down there, but.
You get a setup there, Brian. Okay.
Well, thank you for having me this evening. Representative DTE, part of our requirement with the Polaris Wind project is every 25 years, we have to relook at the study of the decommissioning cost for that and make sure that the community is on hold for that surety bond that we have in place. We did that study, we proactively. You didn't contact us. We looked at our at our calendar, and we knew we were coming up on five years, which had just ended. We did that study, we sent it to your group to review. You agreed with our engineer's review. The surety bond cost went from a roughly $4.5 million up to a current estimate of a $14.8 million cost to decommission the project. This is a rider that you can just, this is the original. You guys get to hold the original. Staple it to the bond that you have. This rider just states a new total value. The bond you have is still in place. This just evaluates that cost. And DTE, again, appreciates Grasset County with the efforts we've done here, and we look forward to still being the good steward and neighbor to those landowners that help support our developments in your municipal communities. We very much appreciate it. Who do I hand this to?
Did you misspeak when you said we have to review this every 25 years, or is it?
Every five.
Five years.
Every.
Thought that's what you meant, but you said 25.
Thank you. It's my dyslexia.
It's okay. I just was like.
You're just no ass.
And I heard fine.
With any questions or concerns?
So, you work for DTE?
Yes, I've been doing wind. Welcome back to my perch. I've been doing wind and solar development for the last 14 years.
What do you think of green energy, renewable energies?
Well, we do need to put more energy onto the grid. Coal costs about $110 a megawatt to produce. If all the coal plants are beyond exhausted in their efforts. We've remold them and reengineered them over and over again. They are literally exhausted at this point. We need to put new generation onto the grid. A coal plant costs about $110 a megawatt hour for every megawatt of energy we would put on over its life. Right now, the wind and solar is somewhere less than $80 a megawatt hour to put energy onto the grid. Right? We still always have to have peak demand. DTE currently still has Fermi as nuclear. We still have the coal plant down in Monroe. It's one of the largest ones inside of Mississippi. But it has the renewed stacks for absorption of any of, to the stack from burning the coal. But natural gas is the way that we'll probably be developing in the future, is on-demand need. Besides that, anytime that the wind is blowing or that the sun is out, we're not having to pay anything for that cost to burn fuel. I mean, literally, we're boiling water, and that's what we've done for almost 150, 200 years to make energy, make electricity. And now we've got the sun less costly, or the wind that's going to blow. And between the two with that mix, that can give us, the wind blows actually better at night, but it does not blow well in July and August. But it does very well when we really need it, which is July and August, is solar. And the city of Lapeer Solar Array, in the middle of the day, when it's the hottest and everybody has their AC on, that solar rate powers the entire city of Lapeer. Right? And we don't pay anything for the energy cost to get that electricity out, once that up. It doesn't always blow. It's, the sun's not always out, so we will probably have to have natural gas and nuclear and that little bit of coal for the extended time we're going to have it. But it's the cost-effective way that we're trying to not increase the rates of the rate payers. If we stay with coal, we would be increasing rates quicker than what they are. So we're doing what we can to manage our repairs costs and be good stewards of the environment at the same time.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
We heard just recently on TV that we get 90% of our utilities from Canada. Is that true?
Not 90%, no, by no means.
It said 90%.
No, but I will, I will add one thing that most people don't know. Canada used to have coal as well. Eight years ago, they shoveled their last load of coal in the entire province of Ontario. So that's Toronto down to Windsor. There's no coal being used in the production of their.
So, when this is all done, will we still be getting utilities from Canada, or will we?
I don't doubt that they will always be part of the mix, right? Electricity is always most efficient if it's generated where the use is. And when you go look at the Upper Peninsula, the north part of Wisconsin, New York, Maine, they're right there for a lot of that hydro power that's coming out of, that's Canada. Those wires are closest, so they don't lose line loss. We have a significant amount of wind in the middle of the United States, but that's not where we live. And it's the loss of that energy to push it all the way to where the people live, that it's not currently feasible to do that. You know, you need to generate it where the people live is the most effective, which is one of the other benefits of the wind and solar, is that we're now, instead of being production on the boundary, external boundary of the state, we're actually producing it closer to where it's used. We have less line loss from that as well.
Thank you, Paul. Hope to see you again in five years.
You shall not.
Oh.
Retired.
I'm smarter than that. There will be somebody else from DTE that will come support you in our community engagement and permitting group. Okay?
Good retirement.
Any last questions before I? Okay. Thank you all. I'm going to let you get on to your meeting, and I'm going to head out.
Take care.
Your travels. Lieutenant Andrews. The one and only.
Only one.
General, you're good.
Young boy.
Essentially, what I have is the jail is relatively entered into a year and a half agreement with our phone and video, which is called Securus. Sheriff told me in your packets, which would be some talking points that I had for him, but essentially, this is twofold, is the one thing is Securus is falling under the spear of the Martha Wright Reed Act, which was signed by President Biden a couple of years ago, and essentially what that did is it gives the FCC statutory authority over communications between incarcerated individuals and non-incarcerated. So basically, what it, what it did in a nutshell, ladies and gentlemen, is in the eyes of Biden administration and the FCC, they interpret it, it is cutting down, gouging inmates and their victims home or have video visits. So Securus was one of the first, first people in the ground as far as phones and video and that sort of thing. In modern corrections, they are not well-known now, as Commissioner Sapsy probably remembers, they're not very well-known anymore for their reliability or their customer service. The problem was and why we re-entered an agreement with them is when I took over as jail administrator, trying to get things organized and found, I cannot find our agreement with them. So by the time I found it, it had been expired, and then we were really under the gun. What I, what I wanted to do is take two of my sergeants to various jails and see what they had, and switch over to something that not only is more reliable, possibly could make us money in the long run, or at least break even. There was not enough time to give these folks notice and that new vendors without being a lack of communication for inmates, and that's, that's a whole new bucket of guts that nobody wants to step in. Essentially, what I did is I met with this lady, and we negotiated the shortest thing I could, which is a year and a half with them. Under this agreement, Securus will be dropping their rates to inmates under the Martha Reed Wright Act to 12 cents a minute. Video visits when purchased will be $5 for 20 minutes. That way, if Johnny's grandma's down in Florida in December, grandma doesn't have to come in in the ice and cold. She can sit in her condo with her laptop and see Johnny and, you know, wish him Merry Christmas while he's hanging out with us. Just for reference, the old agreement, inmates were paying 21 cents a minute, and the video visits were $13 for 20 minutes. So it did track down on these vendors for what they were doing. And of course, as Commissioner Bailey just pointed out, it also creates a problem for, for jails and entities because services that these vendors provided as far as voice and visual recognition, so they use their accounts and not another inmate's account, because yes, they will try to do that and steal phone privileges, one from another. They wanted to start charging the county just over $6,350 a year for that, claiming poverty. So I said, no, thank you. Well, if they want, those phone calls recorded, there's a camera over the phone. If they want to steal these phone minutes, we'll, we'll deal with it accordingly. That's nothing really new to us. The other thing is they graciously stored our video visits and our telephone conversations for, I want to say, 90 days. That way, if there's any, anything going on, various police departments can, or the prosecutor's office can listen to that. It's actually quite an investigative tool inside the jail. And outside, what was free is now $756 a year. We have to have that. That's, you know, that is very integral. So in a nutshell, that's, that's what I have for you, ladies and gentlemen.
And you don't have that in your budget?
I'm sure we do. I was told that since we're in this period to visit you folks and get permission to renew, so.
So you was one of our.
There's money left. There's still money left in the video project. We just spent the $12,000 more on. But there's still, there was like, I think about $25,000 left when they got all done with them, so we have money left in the accounts.
I solemnly approve the Grasset County Sheriff's Office Corrections Division extending their contract with Securus for another 18 months. During that time, I would ask that you start your investigation.
Already on it.
Figured you were.
Thank you. Second.
Moved by Steve, seconded by Tim to purchase the Securus phone agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
Steve.
Just, excuse me, I'm just need to talk to Matt. Matt, we don't have any internet in here. We have no internet.
Yeah, that's Commissioner Sapsy's department, she can do.
Just letting you know, I didn't know you knew. I went to pull all my stuff up. It's sitting like a bump on the log, I guess. I don't have any information.
Stop Grasset County opioid funding. Liz.
I thought I'd help.
My name's Liz Braddock. I'm the health officer from the Michigan District Health Department. Back in March, I was asked to work on a Grasset County Opioid Advisory Steering Committee with the intention of bringing back recommendations to the board on how the opioid settlement money could be spent. So I followed the guidance that was put out by Johns Hopkins School of Public Health, and I'm here today with a request for proposal, an RFP, that I would like the board to approve for its use. So this would be the request for proposal that would go out on Grasset County's website. We'd put on the Health Department and all of our other partners to request proposals for those in our community that can provide services that meets the expectations of what our Grasset County opioid strategy would be to work with harm reduction, prevention, treatment, education, and training, and also recovery. And I just want to draw your attention to the part where if we can get this approved today, possibly get it out by the end of the week, and then we'd have a full week window, get requests in. Then we would then meet as a board again with me or another member coming back to make recommendations of who we believe that the money should be awarded to, that you hold in the bank, not the Health Department. And I just want to say that I did add Ms. Thompson as the contact person for the request to go back to. It can be the Health Department, but it's, I think it should be you as the county who owns, needs the money.
That makes sense. We get the money in the first place.
And then as a reminder, we were looking at about $122,000 a year for 18 years. That would be reason for getting a strategy in place, that we can continue this for the next, I think, the 16 years left. And as a reminder, also, Commissioner Gay represents you, and we appreciate him being a part of the committee that has been working on this.
This is, is this similar to what you're, because you oversee other counties as well, correct?
Yeah, so yeah, I do it in the other two counties where I'm a health officer. We work with a group. The group was formed because they meet certain aspects of the community, so we have, I'm a member from the prosecutor's office. We have a member from the sheriff's on board. We have a few, those with lived experience, some from the faith base. So there's a group together, so that's not, you know, it's not just maybe those who are working in the medical or have one kind of a view of this, so it's a few of us together, yes. I think the intent here is that we should, we need to get this moving forward, because there is a need in the community. And then with this being, if this works out well for this year, we would open it up from awarded go out August 1st, 2025 through next year, so the first award would be a little bit over 12 months to get some of those grassroots efforts moving forward. Then either reapply or reapply it again when it comes to 2027.
Thank you.
Well, we're gonna, not this board, but I'm gonna meet it as, we're gonna meet as a group.
Yeah, it's gonna be probably, yeah, June sometime.
Definitely venue.
It'll be in person. It's going to be at the Child Advocacy Building, and we would meet as a group. We'll send out the, we'll send out the proposals, first of all. You'll have a week to review them, score them, and then you, as a member, will come back, and then we will rate them and decide which ones should be awarded the money, a group effort between, I think there's 12 of us on the group.
So you're looking for a motion to authorize a RFP for the opioid group?
Yes, and to be released at the end of the four weeks on your website.
I saw a move that we approve the RFP as presented for the 2025 Grasset County Opioid Fund. Supporter.
Moved by Steve, supported by Tim to approve a request for RFP for the opioid funding distribution. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Liz.
So you're gonna call soon.
I'll call you, yeah.
Tim, you're not supposed to say that to ladies during the meeting, you're.
I don't know what's funny yet.
I would just, just get her.
Right.
Just giving you the business. Okay, next up, consideration to hire an interim administrator. I hope everybody has read this, because.
Yep, who worked on this? Can I ask?
Steve and I.
And this was built off of what we had worked with Amy Sell. Actually, this was, the amount was actually less than what Amy Sell posted on her website for the position. This is just a amount that Ryan was willing to, when he came in to meet with Dave and I, what was that, a week ago, Sheila, week and a half ago? He came in to meet with us, and we, he obviously had talked with Amy Sell, so he knew the numbers that we had presented out there. So that's how the numbers came about, and that was numbers that he felt comfortable with and we felt comfortable with. Because you can't, he's already retired, so he doesn't get the fringe benefit package. He gets just things. By law, you have to give him the HESTA thing for the time off, because that's the state law now. You have to give him that.
Have to give him one.
Where you earn the sick time, he has to get that, because that's the state law now. The HESTA, when that changed here recently, that, that's the state law. We have no choice. You have to give him that. He didn't even want that. We have to give it to him. And that was something that we had to request get put into. So.
Why did you give him by the hour instead of not by salary?
Well, because some weeks, I mean, it's up to 40 hours. Some weeks, I don't believe he plans on working 40 hours. Some of the weeks, he thought he may work, you know, less hours, 30 to 40 hours. That's why, because if you put him in a salary and he's only here 30 hours, you're paying him X number of dollars. He, he just. The time he's here and the time he's actually doing, and he's working, yep. Yep.
Well, if he works 30 hours a week in a month, he's going to make $11,372. Did you realize that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and if he works 40 hours, it'll be 14,000. But I, what I did is do it by six months. One thing is, you don't pay somebody to come to work by mileage. That was one of the things I checked on. Why are we paying him mileage to come to work?
Well, that, this isn't, we're not hiring him to be our full-time administrator. That probably won't be part of someone else's contract. We went out searching for an interim, somebody to come in who's retired. We found one that has experience. This is standard procedure that these are what happens in the industry. When people are retired and they come in under these contract positions, this is what, this is what happens. You pay them for their mileage to and from work, any mileage they drive while they're at work, and an hourly fee for their hours of work, because they don't get any other benefits. They don't get health benefits. They don't get, there's no retirement, any of that sort of thing. This is strictly a by-the-hour contract employee.
Okay, I'm not, I gotta tell you, I checked on this, and I'm not going to vote yes on it, just so you know. One of them was, you don't pay somebody to come to work. I called a couple of places to ask them, and that's automatically, when you have a job, you just, you go to that work. And usually, with an administrator, it's usually, I mean, he might be here 15 hours one day and maybe not come in the next day, but it doesn't matter. How are you gonna, we don't have a time clock that's gonna, that's gonna keep track of this. And so, and if he works from home, we, you know, I mean, I'm not saying the guy is dishonest. I'm just saying that it's a lot of money to pay somebody. We didn't even pay our last administrator, we didn't pay him by the hour. Paid him, and look at the hours that he spent here. Now, there's, there's issues here. One of those, we haven't even started our budget yet. That's due in September, so it's, I would imagine it's going to be more than 30.
It's one of the things he's going to be working on when he gets.
Well, I would think it would be more than 30 hours a week. I mean, I remember Chris coming in on Saturdays and Sundays to work, because it was a lot of work. And whether you're experienced at it or not, I have friends that were, I have friends like from RSD and places like that. That's what it was kind of going by. And also, we had four people that we, that we interviewed, and I think any of them would have been more than happy to do it by, by, not by the hour, but by, I don't remember what you call it.
Salary.
Salary, yes, thank you. If he works six months with his gas, and this is just 30 hours a week for six months, it's $136,464. Did you know that?
Yeah, I've done the math.
Okay. And if, and if something happens, it goes for a whole year, it's $178,284.
And if you think we're going to hire the next full-time administrator for what Chris was getting paid, I want you to be the one in charge of that.
I'd be more than happy to.
Sit here for three years, question.
I'd be much.
You ain't never gonna find it, what you make.
It's just under $100,000, just under $100,000.
It's just under a hundred thousand, just under a hundred thousand.
Eighty-three thousand dollars.
So.
But with full benefit.
It's eighty-five dollars an hour.
Eighty. What? I think it was eighty, wasn't it? Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, eighty-five.
This is more than Chris. Yeah, and it'll probably be more than the person we hired full-time. And, and it just seems to me that if you hire someone on a temporary basis. Possibly they should be paid less, not more. But I, this is maybe a very good analogy, like I substitute teach. And I'm paid lower than the regular teacher. And, you know, I should be, I'm not. Responsible for them on, on a daily basis. I'm just responsible for, for that day.
Even the teachers don't make this kind of money.
Well, I.
And I, but what I'm saying is, I would think this is a lot easier job working here than it is in the schools today. And your principals, you ask the principal what, what do they make? They don't make this kind of money. We live in Grasset County, but there are people that would work for this for half that.
It's just how you, you know, you, you. That's, that's all.
The thing that bothered me the most is paying somebody, he's probably, he lives in Duwitt. The guy, the guy that sat here lived in Owasso. How do we know he didn't live closer? In fact, he lived on the outside of Owasso. I'm from Owasso.
He did not live in Owasso.
The hearing decisions should not be made. Where they live.
For the record, it was forty-one point one miles, I believe, from his residence to this door. And the female who interviewed was forty-one point three from my own. If I remember, I sent those messages to you exactly, because I figured out from their address, from the address to this building. To the each of their homes, I went through and figured that out. And the two of them were point two miles away from each other, and the other two were two miles away. Distance difference. I couldn't believe it came out that close, that two of them were that close and two of them were that close. So it's. That's how close it was. For they, there was two that were forty-some miles and the other two were eighty-some miles.
This is supposed to be somebody that's really unrefined in this job.
He wants this job for a short period of time. He has assured me when votes are put on October first, he will not be our administrator. So that means we, as a board, have from today until right before then. We have to get our full-time person hired, because he's not gonna be here. Tree stand.
Okay.
You don't know when the forensic audit would.
No, you don't know when any of that stuff.
I thought, I thought that was.
It is a factor, but I hope it's done.
All you can do is bank on it's done by August.
Absolutely, yeah. And I mean, it's, from what I've been told, more than one source. We basically have to get him started and start the process of trying to hire a full-time. It's approximately a four-month process to go through to hire a full-time. If we want to get Casta Web out there as far as we can to bring in the best candidates that are gonna want this job. And I believe one or two of the people mentioned to us.
Yeah, the two guys.
A younger person that may have a family, your opportunity starts the end of the school year. Till the beginning of the next school year. If you want somebody.
You need to get it out now, because they have.
Absolutely. I mean, we, we have no time to, and anybody who thinks they can do a better job and come up with a better contract. Please, I don't want my phone to ring. I don't want an email about it. I don't want nothing to do with it if somebody else can do a better job. So we're more than happy to relinquish that to any board member that wants to spend the hundreds and hundreds of hours and phone calls that I've spent on this. Have at it. Good luck. And if you think you're gonna get a replacement for Chris for what we paid him, we'll be doing this for three years. Until the end of, until we're real.
We can talk this in a certain, the problem is, we, we're in a box. We're in a box that we can't get out of right now.
Exactly.
And, and if you're working in the work, real working world. You'll know that this is, this is an unusual situation, but it's a normal, this happens a lot. It's not a rodeo that nobody else has gone down before. And this, and this is common practice. This is a business practice that has been around for a long, long time. Schools use it, counties use it. This is the way they do it. You hire interim administrator. Because we have a mess and it needs to be cleaned up. We need to clean it up hopefully, but before we get a full line. We don't have time to teach an administrator how to do the county.
Well, let me ask, let me put this, this way then. This started back when Jeff Hoff was working here. When he was. He, we let him go because he lived in Florida for two years and flew back and forth and nobody knew it, but you. You were the only one that knew about it, George. And then on top of that, little by little, he kept taking things that the commissioners used to do. He took it from us. First, we used to get, every month, we used to get a, a paper from every one of the. The departments that told what they were doing in their departments. We no longer know anything about it. There was a lot of things that went away. And little by little, then you wanted Tracy, because she would be bringing everybody together. And she would work well with everyone. She was never here either. And wouldn't she do it? She. Then she hired people to do her work and she wasn't here half the time. I mean, everybody talks about it here. If you're working here, you know what's going on. And George, now you got somebody else in here, only wants to be here four months. And I'm just telling you that, well, I'll tell you what, there shouldn't be a problem. I'm gonna vote no. But we're gonna put this in the paper, because I'm gonna give it to them.
Great.
And they both have called you guys.
You'll be happy to put anything you want in the paper, but be careful what you put in the paper.
Just gonna put the numbers. Nope, I'm gonna put the numbers and we'll see how the public likes.
Sit here and threaten me.
I'm not threatening you. I'm just, I'm just telling you what I'm.
You're telling, you're, you're talking here, saying in.
Gonna tell.
You don't know what.
I know Rosemary and Greg Nelson called all, or text all of yous. I'm the only one that answered his texts.
Well, I never got a text.
He told me, Rosemary.
Nelson in years.
I talked to Rosemary. She said, well, she texted me and she's, I said, did you, all the other guys or text them? She goes, yeah, you're the only one to answer. So I'm just letting you know. But I will, she'll be texting me. She'll be texting all of yous.
Good, I'm happy to.
So anyway, let's continue on. Go ahead, make your motion and let's move on.
I motion that we vote.
To hire an interim administrator.
I'll support that.
Moved by Tim, supported by George to. Oh, yeah, yes.
So you wanna hire Ryan Wood and sign the interim contract?
Yes.
What day?
If you want.
Tomorrow?
Everything, yeah.
Seventh of May. That's the day he's supposed to start.
Thank you.
Sheila's already worked on getting his paperwork around to get it, everything ready to go, right? I mean, he's bringing you in some documents or something.
Yeah, let's have a record roll call on this.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty. Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Motion carried. New interim administrator will be here in the morning. Next up, consideration to sign a memorandum of understanding. With MDOC, Matt.
Good evening. So I just have a quick agreement that the Department of Corrections asked us to sign with them. This is actually a renewal of an agreement that we've signed in the past. It just discusses an arrangement we have where we provide them with a copy machine. And spells out the details of why we provide them with that copy machine. And then if, when that copy machine goes out of commission. How we have to destroy the drives that is included in that copy machine, adhere to their policies at the state.
Any, any conversation?
So move that we approve the contract with, to in Grasset County and the Michigan Department of Corrections. Or this memorandum of understanding.
Moved by Steve, supported by George, to sign a memorandum of understanding with Department of Corrections. All those in favor, say aye. O, nay, motion carried.
I think I should bump mine to next meeting. No, that's okay. We can, we can do mine. So I am asking you to consider for this position. For the clerk's position, a compensation for the coding of the elections. It, it's not just me, but if, in the future, if you want this position to continue coding. All the other counties, I think Claire was the last county this last election cycle, they approved a stipend. I know you don't like that word stipend, for each election, for her to do the actual coding. Compared to contracting with Election Source. I included the February election. Now, you have to understand that August and November would be hard for me to get. Because they break that out and they charge each individual township instead of the, the county. But this is the bill that they charge for just the February election. So if you take that and times it by three. In the year, that's how much our county would be paying to have Election Source do the coding. For our elections on a, on a even year. I charged the township six hundred dollars per precinct, so I bring in roughly twelve thousand, almost thirteen thousand a year. To the county for coding. And so.
Year or election?
I'm sorry, election.
Election.
So I am just asking for this position, if it continues to do the coding, that you. Give a stipend or some compensation to the person who's sitting in this seat doing the coding. Because if we had to resource that out, or if the person who's following me doesn't do the coding. We're gonna be paying a big, big bill. So that's my request.
The stipend. But Steve, you, you've discussed this, twenty thousand an election.
So that was. That was Steve's suggestion that you might, you might want to consider a certain dollar amount. And this is gonna be reimbursed by the Election Reimbursement Fund. It's not coming out of the general fund. It's coming out of the funds that I've collected from the townships. You might want to consider an annual amount instead of a pre-per-election, which would be on me. Because in the even year, if we have February, May, August, November. And then if for some reason Saginaw almost had a special election, because they had somebody that ran for a different office and then a seat was emptied. So then there may be, at some years, there may be four or five elections. So it's up to you. As far as if you want to just do an annual set to come out of the elections.
Does it sound about every year?
Compared to per election.
Per election.
Yeah.
Because there may be some years that there's only two elections, correct?
Yeah.
Or odd years. It would be if the stipend that I had suggested. But it would be covered, it would overshoot your per-election, would still be covered by the amount collected. However, it would, on the years, the other years, it would end up being.
Well, and plus.
For you, it's.
November falls in, even though it's in an even year, it's in the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six election cycle. So you're getting that money after the November, which would pay for the annual that. If that's so choose.
Would it, would it be easier just to have one yearly payment?
I'm totally good with going this way. I just wanna, I, I've said since before I was ever commissioner, I couldn't believe the work that is done. For elections that, that gets done in-house.
Coding, my Memorial Day, my Memorial Day weekend is spent in the office doing the coding for the elections. And then afterwards, it's, it's proofing ballots, it's getting them ready to go to print. And, and that's on me, because we don't necessarily have to meet the deadline for the townships to get the ballots within forty-five days. But I'm very proud to say that all our townships, since I've been clerk, we have not had any late ballots. I haven't had to have a reprint, because you realize that if we had to have a reprint, it can be like very costly, thirty thousand to have.
So Steve, you're, you're good to go which way, no?
I'm good to go. This is how she presented it and I support that, totally. I just. Stipend per election. I feel totally good with that.
Okay, I'm, I make a motion to have a twenty thousand dollar stipend. Go ahead, you do it.
Eighty thousand per election.
Yeah. She'd love it if we. I believe her, her request was for a motion for the clerk to receive eight thousand dollars per future election.
Well, I'd like.
So she has asked for retro back to the November twenty-four election, being paid out. Of the reimbursement for Elections Fund. Is that correct?
Her election going forward.
Forward.
I, I'm sorry, I can't get on the internet. I don't have any papers in front of me. Um, going forward though, didn't you want a set, not like a set amount?
Eight thousand each election.
It's up to you.
You, you, you may men, but, I mean, I heard you wrong, but did you mention that you've?
So there, so then when I've been talking about this with Steve, he, he said, why don't you just ask for twenty thousand? Going forward per year to come out of the elections to pay for.
If you ever.
So what you said and what Tim said are, are kind of like the same thing, but it's not really the verbiage that. I think we're looking for here.
I think you're looking for compensation of twenty thousand per year effective October first, twenty twenty.
Did I make a suggestion? Just in the case, I have him forbid something happen and, and Angie have to step down. If that twenty thousand dollars has been paid to her and we have somebody else come in, then are we paying that person the rest of the twenty thousand dollars?
That's why it's gonna be specified, that's why it's gonna be specified that it's coming out of elections. Because then, and it would be a separate line item, because if the person, my predecessor does not, or my.
Successor.
Successor. Then that would drop off. That wouldn't be part.
I would just suggest that that eight thousand makes it so like you, the person that did that gets that. Rather than, yes, it will, in the end, at the end of the two years, it will still work out to the same amount of money, but then you're paying. I just think that's.
You know, what, what, what do you, Angie, which, which way do you, we want to help you out. Tell us how to help you out.
If you did the twenty thousand a year compensation all the way straight across. I think that that would be also beneficial, because I could do retirement on top of that. That would be part of my retirement pay too. A percentage of that would go into that.
So I say, well, I would like to amend my motion. Can I do that? I would like to amend my motion that the clerk receive twenty thousand dollars per calendar or per year. For her work on elections and to retroactive that back to October first of twenty-four, the beginning of the fiscal year. It'll be continually paid over the future.
Coming from elections.
Yes, coming from the reimbursement of election.
When is it paid?
Starting October first.
What date is it to be paid? Because it's gonna be at the end of the year, correct?
No.
For the ones that you've done, or are we prepaying you twenty thousand dollars for the ones that you will do?
No, that's a year. So that's gonna be an annual.
Right, so when is it paid out?
Do you want it at the beginning of the year? Or do you want to pay it at the end of the year?
So you want, you want the twenty thousand.
Or if I'm going.
You want it broke up over the twenty-six pay periods, just to be for elections?
Yeah, because if, if some.
Because that's how they voted in here has to be.
Kind of both recall type calling, talk, talk the same way.
Yeah.
It's twenty thousand dollars overall to be paid out in an orderly fashion, or how did we want?
Period, I can't, I just.
He just needs to know how to hook it down.
Okay, gotcha. I'm on the same page now.
We have twenty-six, we have twenty-four.
Twenty-six.
And six, Chris.
Fifty-two weeks.
And six, Chris.
You want to read out what your motion is?
Oh, yeah, I was sneaking some extra.
Can we reread the motion so we?
To approve twenty thousand per year, per pay, spread out over.
Pay periods.
To be spread out.
Over each a period. For coding compensation effective October first, twenty twenty-four, coming from election reimbursement.
Did you make that motion, Steve?
Yes, sir. Tim, you supported, supported.
Moved by Steve, supported by Tim. What Angie said. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, nay. Motion carried. Now we skipped over the administrators' report.
I'll be short. Um, building and grounds just let me know that they will potentially be closed on Thursday, May 29th as they have the state auditor coming in. So they're not for sure yet. They just wanted to make you aware that that closure might be coming up. Um, as far as employment openings, we do have a COA kitchen manager position as well as a senior center coordinator position at COA. Um, our parks and rec is set, um, and they will be ready to open, um, the week of May 23rd. So John's got all those in here. Um, I think we've got all their new paperwork. So we're all set with that. Um, last week, um, the material management committee was finally seated, um, about four months after we, our goal. But it is done. Um, I have been, um, put into the chair position. So I will be helping lead this process of getting a material management plan for the Heartland, um, group. So I'm excited about that. Um, we did, um, we're working on gathering up all of those $10,000 requests to go to Eagle so that those can be all sent at once. I do expect that that will happen before the end of the month. Um, and then I will be at the MAKO, which is the, uh, administrators' MAC conference, May 20th through the 23rd. So I will not be at our next board meeting, but it sounds like we will have a new administrator. So I won't have to anyways.
Thank you, Sheila. Steve, what do you have to report on?
Um, let's see, meetings I want to. Uh, we had courthouse security last week. Um, we've been meeting, um, that was out at the 911 Center. Um, we brought in Matt because there's a piece of this that includes the how the courthouse is wired and monitored and the programs that we use. And, uh, building and grounds was brought in as well. Um, so they were both there at the meeting, um, discussing things, um, as far as making sure that all of the fire exits work properly. There's magnets that are installed. Some of you that have been on the board for a long time, do you guys remember when those magnets were installed on the doors? They've been here for years. I don't know when that happened, but they've been here for a long time. Um, and there's, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but they're gonna install some, we gotta figure out if they wanna install panic buttons at each one of those to release them, or if there's gonna be a system in the program that will release them if, if there's a, fire alarm or something of that nature to release those magnets. Also, there was a panic button at the front that has now been disabled. Matt now has it in his office, actually, I believe, right? So that it can't lock people into the building because it, it, it worked too good. It worked to keep anybody from coming out or coming into the building, but it also wouldn't allow you to egress the building if you needed to in an emergency either. So that's something that'll be worked out. I know, um, Tony said today, did you go around with them too, Matt? They just did a tour of the entire building today, um, in hopes to figure, and there's some bugs that need to be worked out. Would that be a good way to put it? And they're gonna get that stuff. They're gonna be working on that with, with getting the technology so that, um, the courthouse can be as secure as possible. And yet egress friendly in case of an emergency, um, which is a huge, huge thing. Also with, uh, the possibility of veteran affairs moving, um, to another location, um, that could possibly be place where, um, like it could be the security office. Most any building you go in that has security, has a security office where equipment and further monitoring equipment can be stored instead of sitting on a makeshift desk with a laptop. Just in the middle, this, this area out here, when they built this courthouse, was designed to not have a security and secret entrance. And then some airplanes hit buildings in 2001. And since then, this has been a convoluted mess as far as I'm concerned. If you've ever sat here in the morning and watched people come to work, it is an absolute Ingrasha County, in my opinion, um, because there's people who have court dates that start at the same time and those people are coming in. It's not like just our employees are coming in. You have the public coming in and it is a debacle passed out there on some days. Come here when a large family wants to watch someone get married in the courthouse. It's a joke and it, it needs to be fixed and there's a way to make it better. And I don't know for sure what that's gonna look like, but I think it, we owe it to, uh, the, the employees of Ingrasha County and the people who work in this building to at least explore what it would cost to redevelop that front area so that it's a workable space where people can do their job. They can have the equipment that they need to have accessible to them and you know, whether it's the courthouse or the Veterans Affairs back office that's used for their courthouse security, which is the most logical because it's really close and the door is right there. Or if we re-convert this closet over here that has never had anything but a couple of chairs and tables in it in the six years that I've been around Ingrasha County, something has to be utilized in an, in a way that they can have a successful place. I don't know what that's gonna look like, but I think we should, um, keep going with the security, um, process to try and figure out what would be, what's gonna look like in the future. So that's what we did at our security meeting. Um, I missed the parenten meeting on Monday, or yet last night, um, because I was gone, so.
Jen, what do you have to report on?
Okay, I went to Alma City for their meeting last, or the last, um, Tuesday of the month. And, um, it was kind of a short meeting. And I also went to Harrison, uh, to the, material management, material management, material management meeting. I was very impressed. First of all, it's an old building and the meeting was in the basement and they'd painted everything white. The ceiling, the walls, very, very nice, very clean. And it was a nice big room, probably maybe bigger than this room. They, there was about 36 people that were in there. They, they served coffee and donuts and cookies and, and they also had a screen where people could call in or that wanted to be a part of the meeting could also be a part of it. And, um, it was, I think a couple of hours, was it? An hour, an hour and a half. And the good part was, you guys, this is eight counties that go there from all over Michigan and they needed a chairperson. And Sheila here, that sits next to me, was nominated as the chairperson and had wonderful remarks about her, about how she had done a lot of research on, um, it's about the re, um.
Recycling.
Pardon?
Recycling.
Recycling, the recycling and what they're gonna do. Also, there was three companies there, uh, Waste Management, um, Ranger, and the third one, I did not recognize the name and I can't remember it. But it was, it was a very educational meeting. I was glad I went. And like I told everybody here, it's just kind of fun to go to different meetings, get a little bit educated about things. So I'm planning on trying to hit everybody's, every meeting there is this year. I wanna go to the airport, maybe in the night, by the summertime. Uh, the ones that are furthest away, I'll go now this summer and then this winter, I'll do the ones closer on like Commission on Aging and places like that, or maybe the Health Department. But anyway, it's just, it's just kinda nice to know what's going on and, and, and very educating. So other than that, that was, that was about it.
Okay.
And congratulations to Sheila.
Yeah, congratulations, Sheila. Tim.
Um, before I left the Myrtle Beach, um, um, Sutton was here uh, talking about solar storage. And he reassured us the safety of this. Uh, to me, he did not address, because he, like this, he wasn't qualified. He did not address the more, most important issue of the placement of, of solar panels. Why, why do you place it over farmland and why, uh, is it done so aggressively? He, he didn't address that. But, uh, he reassured us of safety. Okay. Um, then one thing, um, it, it probably doesn't make much difference, but, uh, yo and yo, you know, they, they use Zoom. And I, I kinda got after him about it, but you know, you said that it's face to face and stuff. I, I'd just like to, maybe I could illustrate it. Imagine you're a retailer and there's two salesmen. They sell the same product at the same price and they're pretty identical. One salesman will be right with you whenever you want. The other salesman will say, no, I can only meet you on Zoom. Which one would you go? Little food for thought. Well, in other words, I, I don't like yo and yo. I, I'd like to meet him face to face.
No. It's a new century.
I know, I should be hip with the times.
George, what do you have?
On the 21st, I went to the Duncan Ridge Village meeting. Um, just normal courses of action there. And on the 23rd, we had a Health Department meeting, went there. There's normal course of business there and our health officer was so busy with all the measles outbreaks that she didn't really have a time to her formal report. She did the kinda cursory report on all the measles outbreaks that I've got, so. Montomb County right now is the one that seems to be the hot spot in the state of Michigan even. And surprisingly enough, the measles outbreak in Montomb County came from Canada. Now you'd have thought it came from Texas. That's where it all started, right? Canada. It's kind of interesting.
Other than that. And, and that's because, uh, they're not, kids aren't immunized.
I don't, I have no idea. But that's what, that's where it came from. So I got it.
Well, I have, uh, all my meetings earlier in the month, but I did go to the ribbon cutting ceremony at the Pine River Solar. That was, uh, that's kinda interesting. They, uh, put a whole bunch of solar panels out there on 46. I, I gotta find out how much energy they're producing.
Megawatts. I don't know.
I don't know, but.
It's pretty impressive from the air. I got to fly over it. It's Tuesday, uh, Sunday ago, not this one, but the past Sunday, I got to fly over it. Pretty impressive from there. Big.
So, yeah, that's all I have.
What is it? Cause isn't the one down in just north of Ashley that's in your district and mine?
Yeah.
I think that one's 90 megawatts, isn't it? Is it? Cause it's like 25 on one.
Yeah, it's a mega, yeah, megawatts.
Maybe it's 100. It's 50, it seems like it's 55 on one side of the road and 45.
Yeah, there's somewhere in there, but I don't.
That one's similar in size.
I wanna see how much, like, I don't remember. It's around 100 megawatts, but I'm.
That one's similar in size.
I, I don't, yeah, so I didn't wanna know.
Well, I'd like to know how many homes under megawatts will, will.
They won't play around here, that's for sure. Going, it's going the other way.
Okay, uh, any additional public comments? Nope. Uh, we.
I motion that we go in close session.
Yeah. And I'll support that.
Moved by Tim, supported by George to go into closed session for negotiations for collecting bargain, bargaining agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Luck.